Don't forget to like and subscribe to our YouTube channel at www.youtube.com/fortyninecountynewsTV.
All the schools that's coming up and kind of explain how we'll handle that at our next meeting.
Okay, um, actually Tammy is the one that helped, helped me break this down because you know, we've agreed to give the schools a hundred and thirty-five thousand a year for two years.
Come in.
Um.
Say yeah. Hey guys. Good to see you. Come on down and have a seat please.
Thank you.
Hey there.
Go ahead.
And um, we have it scheduled to do it like the first day of September which of course we won't be here then, so we're gonna do it on Tuesday night, the fourth. And Tammy had talked to the different schools and kind of broken it down. We had agreed to fix it, correct me if I'm wrong Tammy, that each teacher could get like two hundred dollars, kind of set up in their own account. And um, she had broken it down where there were like forty-seven teachers at the elementary school, uh, thirty-one at the high school and twenty-seven at the middle school. So that was gonna leave us writing like a check for ninety-four hundred dollars to the elementary school, sixty-two hundred to the high school and fifty-four hundred to the middle school, which that total would be twenty-one thousand dollars that we would take off of the one-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand-dollar gift to give them. That money will be set aside so that each teacher will have the two hundred dollars to, to use for their school supplies. So we were gonna do like three separate checks, you know, for those, those amounts. One for ninety-four, one for sixty-two hundred and one for fifty-four hundred to the respective schools. And that would leave a balance of a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars after we take that twenty-one out of the hundred-and-thirty-five. And we will split that three ways equally between the three schools, which would, would be each school getting thirty-eight thousand dollars apiece. So basically we'll be writing each school two checks.
Each school two checks?
Yes.
Okay, and, and you're gonna notify the parties to be here to accept their checks?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Alright. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you Tammy for figuring that for me.
They just, I just asked and they, the principal sent the information so.
Go ahead. Southern Magazine is coming to Hamilton Friday to do a little article. Um, they'll be here at nine o'clock. They'll be doing some video and, and some write-up. Basically they're gonna feature mounds that we have here in Hamilton. I went to Birmingham and had the mounds added to the Alabama tour, tourist attraction for the state. The organization is gonna do some signage for us and, and put down at the mounds. And we'll be having um, some input from, possibly input from Mr. John Berryhill, who's served as the Indian chief for a period of time for the tribe that still meets here occasionally. He may have a few comments in the article. Uh, but they'll be here Friday morning to do that and uh, it'll be a little publicity for our area. And that won't be an expense item in the city. That's gonna be something that will be done for us. Alan Cantrell is, is going to work uh, this week. He called me and said he reviewed our July numbers. They still look strong. He's going to work this week on our next year's budget. He and Brenda have been gathering some data from us and he'll be working on the budget immediately. Like to announce that uh, you all are invited to the August thirtieth Fish Fry that NACOG is sponsoring. Uh, each elected official uh, is specially invited to that. It's gonna happen tomorrow night at six at the college auditorium there on the same grounds where NACOG's building appears. Our special guest today are Melinda Weaver, who represents our area for Alabama Power, and Terrence Smalltree, who heads up the lighting, municipal lighting division for Alabama Power. I believe Tuscaloosa's headquarters maybe for you. Is that correct?
Birmingham.
Birmingham, okay.
Most times I'm not there.
Okay. I'll try to plus you in Tuscaloosa. I don't know why I'm trying to put you over there. Anyway, uh, we're proud to have them with us today and uh, I had contacted uh, Melinda about the, the possibility of some better lighting for our downtown area where we had uh, put up our decorative poles that went with the revitalization project downtown and um, she had contacted Terrence and we got to talking about the possibilities. LED lighting is, is not a thing of the future. It's here now. LED is really big on everybody's agenda. And Terrence agreed to make a presentation to us today and kind of update us on what they could do in the way of uh, maybe some kind of a deal with us here in the city. And I'll not get too deep into his territory. I'll just uh, at this time turn it over to Terrence or Melinda, whoever wants to talk to us first.
Okay. As you mentioned, Terrence works out of our Birmingham office on LED lighting across the state. So uh, we met with Mayor Page a few weeks back and are here today with more detailed numbers. So we wanted to share those with you. So Terrence, turn it over to him.
Okay. Thank you everyone for having us here. Um, won't take too much of your time, but I did wanna uh, go over what we have with LED lighting and um, have a, just a handout of a presentation that we have. And, and so feel free to stop me as we go or ask questions to us in, anywhere you want to. So what I wanted to, uh, first thank the mayor for meeting with us uh, not long ago about LED lighting. Kinda get a little more information about your city and what you're looking for. And again, I'm the municipal account manager for LED lighting. At one point I had the entire state and then we got counterpart but we're growing. Uh, um, we're pretty wide open when it comes to LED light, street roadway lighting, but also for businesses and industrial customers. With that being said, uh, if you look at the presentation and all it is is that we want you all to know as our customer that your current agreement that you have with lighting, whether it's roadway lighting, the street lights or in your parking lots or anywhere you have lighting and you lease through Alabama Power, that lease agreement does not change. That, that remains the same. And the good thing about, difference is what you're going to be better lighting, um, not only better lighting, but also um, lighting that is more uniform, lower maintenance. And what we're doing now, what we weren't able to offer in non, um, in the non-LED lighting area is that we can come in and also look at doing your parking lots and, and your own city on street lights. And, and we can come in and retrofit the heads and for roadway lighting, what we've been doing with cities is that we'll come in and if you want us to, we can come and take it over for you. So basically from that point on, if somebody hits a pole, no cost to you all as far as upfront, uh, we, we invest all the capital. Own difference is, is that you just have a lease per pole, per location. So that, that's how that works. And then what I wanted to do on the next few pages would just show you all um, the difference in where we've, these are actually lighting jobs that we've done throughout the Southern Company system, where wherever the lights were there, we did the equivalent and we uh, retrofitted the heads. And that means just taking the entire head off and putting, and you can see the difference, the impact of um, the lighting that we put in. And, and for, normally for all the parking lots that you have, that is already leased through us, non-LED, where there are some savings for those areas. So we're able to come in, keep the price low for you, keep the prices safe with about five percent savings on your parking lots. Uh, as, as long as if they're released in the beginning from Alabama Power. Of course, if they were leased from us and you all own it and say they're wired into your building or metered, then we already captured the energy. We just add a maintenance part of, of that agreement. But it works the same. You know, we're on the fixtures and the wire to the handhold and that really eliminates eighty, eighty-five percent, sometimes ninety percent of any issues that you have with lighting. And so if you look at the next page, again, you'll see with the parking lot, the large parking lot with all the cars, you'll see the high impact of going LED. And again, we just did the equivalent of what was out there and, and you can see how much it changed. And that's why a lot of parking lot, a lot of restaurants like for us to do their lighting because it's no color radiance. If you have your cameras, you know, your customers feel more safe. Your citizens feel more safe because you can see a lot further. You can identify people with dark clothing. And then when I mentioned to you all about what we could do on your side of the meter, meaning um, if you look at the next picture, this is a road that is for a city, for a major hospital. And this road, the city owned all of these poles, fixtures and all. And the only thing we did up until a year ago was just provide the energy for those. The city was responsible for um, fixing those poles and owning everything other than the energy. And so when they decided to go with us and, and change out the lights that they leased from us, they said, hey Alabama Power, we wanna be out of like business because we can free up our resources for other things. And so this is one where we came in, for roadway lighting only, if we come in and retrofit what you own, we can take it over for you all together. You know, for parking lots, we'll just own the fixtures and the wire and you're still on the poles in the underground. But the benefit of roadway lighting is, we came in and I actually, I couldn't get before pictures 'cause it was at, it was about eleven o'clock at night when I went out there. But um, you're talking about over forty poles, two fixtures from lease poles. So it's a long road. It's a busy road 'cause it's a major hospital. So we came in and retrofitted all of those fixtures to LED light and you can see the difference. And, and it is, it was completely dark. You couldn't even, this is the same spot. I came in, tried to take before pictures. You couldn't even see further than your hand. That's how dark it was. And so we came in and we retrofitted the heads and we took over all the ownership. Doesn't matter the shade, the condition of your lights fixtures. We own it. We, anything that needs to be upgraded, we do. Um, within a week of these lights being retrofitted, it rained. Somebody hit a pole. That was a year ago. Since then, somebody hit about two more poles. Well, the city told us that based on what they normally have to pay somebody, contractor, for what they pay us for the year, it pretty much would have covered that. Um, so all it, it eliminates, it's following insurance, paperwork, all of that when we can get that, you know, take that over for you. So that's something to consider as well. And then on the next page, this is roadway lighting and this is, uh, all of these were on wooden poles, four-hundred watt high pressure sodium cobras. And for another city that's, you know, it's five lanes and you can see uh, what we've done. We came in and did the equivalent of those four-hundred watt cobras and we changed them out to LED. No upfront cost to the customer. Now, what we're able to hold the price is, is that anything that's, uh, like say if you currently have out there on your roadway, a one-hundred watt cobra or higher and the one-hundred watt cobras are ten dollars and eighteen cents. If we come in and we change all those or higher, we hold the price for you. So the price doesn't go up, price doesn't go down. Now where uh, the price does impact goes up is when you have anything less than a one-hundred watt cobra, meaning like the seventy watt and the one-seventy-five watt mercury vapors, anything like a mercury vapor open bottom, meaning those lights were never designed for roadway. But years ago when cities started putting them in, it was because it was the least expensive light. And so what we've done is a company Alabama Power partnership with all our cities is that we just maintain at a low price because it's just inexpensive light. But the LED lights, the technology has surpassed all of those lights. And so those lights you currently have, you got a lot of light pollution. And so what we're doing is going with more efficient light and the fixtures, I brought one today. And this is actually what the LED fixture looks like. So you eliminate the globe, uh, the dirty fishbowl, I, I like to call it. But this is what it actually looks like on a pole. The, the fixture has to come off, the old fixture has to be removed from the bracket and we put this in. And so each one of these are individual LED um, lights. Unfortunately, every now and then you may have, we may have vandalism to a certain area. And even if someone were to damage all of these on the side, the remainder would still work. You know, unless something with this. And, and these fixtures are um, are three times as much and the photo cell is five times as much. But we, no upfront cost, which we try to keep the price at a minimum for our customers. So the technology on these, you know, we're looking at wifi, um, network control indemnity lights and all, especially for like your parks or your, your entertainment areas. Um, and also uh, fiber and um, we're working with a lot of cities doing uh, shot spot and cameras license plate readers. So that's something that you want to consider as well. And moving your city towards more of a smart city. So a lot of these that we're providing because of LED lighting is what a lot of cities are going with us uh, pretty much statewide. Because, well, you know, smart city is defined by how you define your city. But it does include LED lighting and all the like smarts, you know, uh, cameras and shot spots, those things that I mentioned and other things that are coming down the pipeline with these LED fixtures. So they, they capable to do a lot of things for a lot of cities. It just depends on what you think is um, uh, appropriate for your city. And, and on the last few pages of this, it's just different types of fixtures. You know, traditionally, historically, we've always used those two or three different types of fixtures for our cities. And these are not even half of the fixtures because we're going to LED that we're able to offer cities and, and unique. And we can even take fixtures, for example, that you may have that may not be unique anywhere else but to here. And we can come in and work, take a fixture, work with our manufacturers and ninety-five percent match that for you all. So that is the beauty of LED lighting. And so um, if, before we go into the costs and pricing analysis, does anyone have any questions?
If, we have less lights with this than we have now. I mean distance apart.
Okay, uh, good question. Couple of things. One, when we do a citywide upgrade, we do head-to-head. So with the pricing, then I'll pass out the price analysis now. What we do is, whatever you are, are being billed, um, and whatever you being billed in our billing system, we take that and, and we'll take that amount of number of lights and do a head-to-head change out, the equivalent. And so basically, it's, it's a one-for-one. Now, if you have an area sir, say for example, say you got a block with three lights and it's the high-pressure sodium lights and if we can, um, you know, LED or better watt lighting. So if there's an area where we can go uh, two instead of three, then we'll do that. But typically with the citywide upgrade and the good, the good news about, the good thing about you all's um, number of lights, you, you have very little of the um, let's see, make sure that is correct. You have very, you have a minimum of anything less than a one-hundred watt light. And remember, a one-hundred watt cobra is ten dollars and eighteen cents a month. And so you have, you have about twenty-one of the one-seventy-five watt mercury vapors. And so those currently you're paying with taxing all of ten dollars and five cents. So if you upgrade to the minimum, those lights in that one, one-hundred watt mercury vapor open bottom, which is six dollars, you're talking about if you upgrade your entire city to LED and far as the, and I just went off the building. Right now we're billing you for forty-seven street lights throughout your city. And so we come in and do a head-to-head change out uh, to LED and upgrade to the minimum what we recommend. Basically, you get a whole new lighting system, technology, uh, and your price won't go up seven dollars. No upfront cost to you and we hold the price like we always done for all our cities.
And seven dollars a head?
Uh, just over, your bill overall.
Seven dollars?
Yes, yes sir. Yes sir. Yes sir. Yes sir. Based on what you have out there now. And what, what I've done on this price analysis, what I do is, is I take what that street, this is your street, your streetlight account. That light account, I take out all the lights that are leased to you all from Alabama Power. It is a total of forty-seven lights. I take those lights and I break them down, type of fixture that you have. And so with those type of fixture, this is what you paying. For example, if you look at the first one, the open bottom one-hundred watt mercury vapor, those lights that you wanna get off your, your roadway, but those are not environmentally friendly and they're just um, um, just a lot of light pollution. Luckily, you only have one. Cause some cities what we run into, they may have three hundred, four hundred of those lights and they're six dollars. So that's why the price goes up so high because you take two hundred lights, you time four dollars, you're talking about improving your city, but it goes, your bill goes up eight dollars. So luck, I mean eight hundred dollars. But luckily, fortunately with you all, you don't have many of those lights. And so basically the lights that you have now, you can see where, if you look on the left-hand side, that one light costing you six dollars for the mercury vapor, one hundred watt. And then you got twenty-one in your city that we're billing you for, uh, the open bottom one-seventy-five watt mercury vapors. Those are not good lights either, but the price is closer to what we recommend. So it will only be a thirteen cent impact. And then we have the, and the good news is, is that you have twenty-five of the uh, two-fifty high-pressure sodium cobra lights. Those are above the one-hundred watt that we recommend, so no price change for those either. So we'll come in, give you a better fixture and you don't have a price increase. And how that works is that if you decide to move forward, and remember, this is just recommendation, what we recommend all our cities to do. Because that's the most appropriate light that a lot of cities either put in from the beginning years ago or doing now. And so um, what, what happens is, is that information on the left-hand side, that streetlight account is already established. And so if you decide to do a master agreement, right now with, with the number of cities that have, that have signed master agreements so far, um, it went from eight to twelve weeks for shipment to about at least a minimum of three months shipment for these fixtures to come in. And then once they come in, we gotta get it in, um, engineered and get it assigned to contractors, four to six weeks to get that done and start installing. But once we install, it won't take long to install them. Cause once we start, we won't stop until we've completely converted your entire city. And what happens is, is that it doesn't all happen at one time. That exists, that, that existing streetlight account that you currently have with those forty-seven fixtures, what happens is, we'll create a new account. When, once the fixtures come in, you will have where this account, the old account will start, number will start going down and then the new account will start going up and that will reflect the LED and the monthly billing and the difference will be set, almost seven dollars. And that's just based on what you're currently being billed.
What about maintenance on these, these lights? How have you found the, the light maintenance for LED? Is it pretty low or?
Greatly reduced. Um, a lot of cities, the feedback we're getting, especially from uh, the police uh, department is that they appreciate it because they're, a lot of times they're the ones that are either receiving the calls or having people going or they might even verify. So they greatly reduce the maintenance and the calls are greatly reduced. Now, we do still get where there may be a circuit out and that has nothing to do with the fixture itself or maybe the wire, something outside of the fixture that causes, big cause of lights not to work. You know, sometimes, especially if we take over customers' lights. You know, our lights on photo cell, but their lights may be on one circuit. So if something happens with one light, all of that string of lights will go out. So we'll come and repaint. But the maintenance is greatly reduced. Now, of course you can't prevent people from hitting the poles and all that, but it's a lot less calls to have to come in or relamping of the lights every so often.
Do you put up new poles?
No sir. We use the existing poles and brackets. Now what we, now what we will do is, is if a pole is leaning, especially if it's a light-only pole, we'll come in and straighten it out as much as we can and then put a light on there. But only thing that would be different would be the actual fixture. Everything else, wire and all that remains the same. Because um, the thing about the LED lighting, the difference between what you have and what we're going to, our is, our department, the LED lighting department is a, we're not the three years old. You know, Georgia Department of State Department's a lot older than we are. But we're three years old and we've grown our department. And so everything's in-house. We have our own engineers. We have people, account manager like myself. We have the sales reps. We have the finance. Everything's in-house. Where versus where typically you call, you call and you get power delivery and you get local office. You get separate departments. So everything's in-house and we do everything in-house. So the only thing we control is just the fixtures unless it's the lightning pole on.
How about lightning? Is it a more, is LED more susceptible to lightning strikes or anything like? Have you found that to be?
Not, no sir. But typically if it's anything to do with lightning, it's more so with the, the energy that goes to the lights and that transformer been blown. Of course if a transformer gets blown because of lightning, then uh, lights don't work or it's power to your buildings. But not just the fixtures themselves.
Usually don't hit the fixtures.
Okay. Are, are you telling us, will we be putting up less lights than we have now and still have more lighting? Or the same amount?
Same number.
Same number?
Yes.
Alright, how much is that gonna cost?
This is the cost right here.
I mean extra over what we're paying now?
Seven dollars. Based on forty-seven fixtures, no total. Um, you're currently monthly, you're paying average of seven-hundred and six dollars. So if you go, if you convert all of them to LED, you go from forty-seven to forty-seven, forty-seven of the, what you have, the high-pressure sodium lights to forty-seven LED fixtures, you'll go up only seven dollars a month in your bill. As long as it's the same number.
But, we're gonna have to buy the lights.
No, you don't do anything.
In other words, we're not gonna be out anything but seven dollars more a month.
That is correct. There's no, and that's the
But how can we lose?
That's a big benefit to cities. That's a very big benefit. Even if, if some cities, the price may go up significantly more, but they're looking at it as, well, it's something that we should have done a long time ago. We can do it. If I don't have to pay anything upfront and maintenance, nothing changes. It's just that it's better lights, more efficient lights, then I'm good with it. So basically what I'm saying is, is that based on what we have billing you for right now, you go to LED, your bill won't go up seven dollars a month. You get brand-new fixture, no upfront cost to you and that's what you pay every month. And your maintenance agreement remains the same, actually even better because it, it frees up your resources at night.
Are any of our exit lights on this program or is this strictly for downtown?
Well, this is, this streetlight account is anything, all the lights in your, on your city limits. If it's a, if it's a light leased to you from Alabama Power, roadway. So all of these are roadway lights. And so as long as it in your city limits. Now intersections, like say your state highway, that may be al dot, you know, um, what we can do, what we are doing with cities now, especially at your intersection, your traffic signals, for which, cause again, you don't want to change all your roadway with Alabama Power and then you got these intersections with high-pressure sodium lights. And so it's a benefit, it's a, it benefits everybody. Cause one, if we're agreeing to work with cities, well, we'll come in and change out the intersections to LED. Of course, that's benefits al dot, as long as they approve it to where they don't have to. Cause eventually they gonna, you know, at some point they'll be changing theirs out to LED, like they've done some of their interstates. Well, it keeps them from having to put in the capital. We can come in and change out your intersections for those lights to LED. Now, we won't own anything because of liability to those intersectional traffic signals. We don't own anything of that. We would just own the fixture and the wire. So if the fixture goes out, we'll maintain the fixtures that are intersection, but we don't touch the poles or traffic signals. But again, it gets you more uniform. It gets better lighting at those intersections, especially with foot traffic and just safety and, and, um, and turning on red and all that. But it also helps as far as um, just a better look for the entire city.
Cause we have like four exits coming off of the interstate.
Now.
And I didn't know.
Okay, now that's a good question. Now, we don't do interstate lighting yet. That is something that we probably end, we'll do sometime in the future. I don't know when. Now, if it's on interstate, cause you know, a lot of those lights on interstate, they'll still pose, they lead to the ramp, on, on the ramps and they lead to the exit. Those are all tied into the same circuit. We don't touch those. Uh, those remain with al dot in the agreement they have with the city. Now. Now.
They put them in, we maintain them.
Correct, correct. Now, if it's a light that is close to the intersection or at a intersection. You know, and it's not tied to that circuit, yes, we can work with you on that. We can definitely do that. But um, eventually, hopefully one day, uh, cause I'm I I'm hoping soon that we can help a lot of cities. Cause the question you asked, the same question a lot of cities ask, is that can you help with interstate lights, especially the ramps?
Cause they're very dark, even when they're all lit up, they're still not very bright.
What you need is.
I.
Yeah, such as?
I I love the presentation and the and the.
I like the brush.
And to get the, to get the new lighting that has low maintenance and efficient lighting like this, I think it's a great deal. Uh, one-for-one trade and maintaining the price and the service agreement.
Correct.
All that is great.
Yes, sir.
We're gonna, we're gonna put this on the agenda for an approval of.
This isn't doing anything to the downtown, to the revitalized area.
Now, are these lights, is this new or existing that you have downtown? That's a good question.
New compared to the roadway lights.
So the lighting you're talking about downtown is existing, is already out there?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Now, is this lighting owned and by my Alabama Power, or is it owned by the city?
I'm thinking the city.
We own the, we own the revitalization.
So this will not touch anything in the downtown revitalized area.
Correct. That is, that is separate. Now, what cities are doing are working with us, and that's something you want, and we can look at for you all as well. If you're interested, and uh, if there's not, even if they're, well, two things. One, if they're not LEDs and you want them to be LED, what we can do is, we can come in and retrofit all the heads. The good thing about working with all the fixtures we have, again, we can match at least close to ninety-five percent of the look that you have or typically. Depends on if it's the same fixture, a lot of our manufacturers already use, and maybe somebody you've worked with in the past, we come and match that same fixture. You pay, you don't pay anything upfront. We already captured the engine. Only thing will be added will be the maintenance part. And it could range from anywhere from twelve to twenty dollars per per pole. So uh, uh, and then what happens is, if it's roadway lighting, uh, we come in, say, we're dedicated to it. We come in, retrofit the heads. Then every month, how many poles you have, that's what should be billed for the maintenance agreement. And then if somebody hits a pole or whatever, you're out of light business. You call Alabama Power, somebody hits a pole, you don't have to do any paperwork for insurance, any of that. So we'll limit all of that that you have. You just call us. You don't call a contractor. If somebody digs the wire out, you know, in the ground. And um, you call us. We take care of everything. Now, if you've already converted to LED, we can just come in and just start charging your maintenance from that point forward. And it's nothing that you do, we can take care of that for you. So it's just how you, how you want it. So if they're not LED, we can work with you and give you a proposal to change all those lights out to LED. You pay nothing upfront, and then we just own everything for you.
So you called about the downtown. Okay, but in fact, we're not discussing the downtown.
No.
Okay. That's why I got confused, because in the beginning, you said he called about the downtown area. All this other, and I'm thinking, wait a minute. Okay, so the downtown's completely out.
He heads up that department and and for them and and he's, he represents their uh, sales force for this and. And he's actually offered to help me with the downtown uh, bubs. We we need to upgrade our bubs. Down there, so when we have events, people are not in the dark. We're still in the dark. We got lights that. That don't project enough light to to light up our street, and we were looking to do something there also.
We can, we can look at it with you. If you have somebody, mayor, uh, if you have somebody that represents your city that knows. The downtown, maybe your facilities person or somebody that knows the voltage, because what we have to do, I have to connect them with our engineer. An engineer would be with them on site. If they have lighting plans or the number of fixtures or or the information, if not, that's fine. We just need to see the voltage and all that and see what it's gonna require, determine what's out there now. Because it may be a seven watt, you know, light that we can go with a better. And keep in mind what we also can do for you. At no cost to you all, we work with our manufacturer, the photometrics. We can do a lighting study of what you have, and then it'll come back and it'll tell us. If we go to these types, you know, we can show you the lighting pattern and say, cause a lot of times the spray it will be better. We can, we can show you, you know, the results of, where it would, it would be beneficial if you upgrade those lights. They may be already, the watt is, you know, the high watt is just, it's just not very bright.
They're pretty new. Could you do all of that for us? Yeah, we could price on it.
Yeah, we could do all that.
What extra it would cost us?
Yes, sir. No cost to you.
Okay. We sure wanna do it. It's no cost to us. And we need to do it bad. That's, we need it bad.
How many decorative lights are we talking about? Do you know right off? How many blocks?
Oh, God. About nine poles.
I have two lights on some of the poles and I I think there's something about the downtown though, but this isn't gonna.
Rodney, you know how many poles we installed?
I think, I can't remember.
It's not a lot of poles, is it?
No.
I've not been there just a few years.
Yeah.
No, it's. It was done, and the last administration did the revitalization and all the poles were put up then. So we're two years into this. They're probably three to four years old.
So if you, if you have those plans, that would be great.
We could do that, but also we can upgrade your existing lighting. Is it any overhead nearby or any, like, we got your decorative lights? But is there any poles?
No, no.
Just only decorative lights?
Only decorative lights.
We can, we can.
And I'm thinking that there's something, because of the way that was paid for, that it, there's some. Some deal about changing the overhead lights or, I'm trying to find out just a minute. Or keep on talking, I'll keep on.
I'm good. Just uh, we can look at that and give you a price.
Kenneth, these folks are from Alabama Power. They're talking to us about LED lighting versus what we have on our streets. All of our streetlights that are in the city limits, uh, uh, exchange one-for-one. Uh, total of forty-seven exchanges, raising our bill six dollars and ninety cents a month. While we're voting today currently, keeping the same maintenance agreement and. They're also thinking about helping us examine the versatility, getting better lighting on our downtown revitalization. Those poles are pretty dim. We have vents, outdoor vents, and they're gonna try to help us there also. Kenneth, on our council, these just.
And no cost.
Do they last longer?
Oh, yes, sir. Maintenance is greatly reduced, and they last long.
We can still use them like we are the ones now as far as if we're plugging Christmas lights.
Yeah, you, we don't touch any of that.
None of that will change.
We don't touch any of that. We just retrofit the heads. We don't touch the pole. We don't, and we wanna keep the look, the same look, the same which which you have now. Yes, ma'am.
So Kenneth, that uh, that head that you brought with you today.
Oh, yes, sorry.
That's an LED streetlight. That's con- completely contained. He says you could damage one side of that and actually the other would remain good.
All of these are individual LEDs. Yeah, yes, sir. And no light pollution, well.
I'll, I'll end up with one soon.
He's a little mad at me. I said he was from Tuscaloosa.
I'll be from Tuscaloosa if you want me to.
I don't know why I said that.
Any other questions or you?
Sammy's gonna uh, research that a little bit more and.
Yeah.
Make sure that we can actually exchange those light heads for.
And maybe if we're just exchanging them, we can, but we can't add anything extra. There's, there's some, there's some deal.
We got a government grant, uh, block grant to do that work downtown, and there's some rules that went along with it. So we have to make sure we comply with the federal rules and follow those to the letter. Even though we're not satisfied with the brightness of those pole lights, the little lamps that are on the top of the pole just don't. Give us enough light when we have events. We're having like uh, fir- uh, first Fridays and things like that each month. For those events, we have some entertainment right after the sun goes down. A lot of times, people have to, what's going on out there?
And you mentioned granting, what we do, you know, of course, we don't do on our side, but if you have grants where you're working on lighting projects. We can work, and what we do for street skate projects that you have on your own, we're working with cities where we'll work closely with your developer. Or your architect, and um, you know, you can do everything like you're doing it on your own. We provide the expertise, what we recommend, the photometrics. And we won't do anything as far as cost. You you cover the cost through your, through your uh, through your grant. And then once it's installed, we'll take it over for you. We'll just make sure you meet our lighting specs. So that's something to consider as well, too.
Terrence, you mentioned, you hit on something that kind of flew by me there, but I wanna come back to it, and that's parking lots. Um, explain a little bit more about your program for parking lots, because I kind of missed that.
Okay. Now, um, for example, if you have your parking lots that have our lights already that you lease from Alabama Power, a lot of time they're on overhead. Now, what we are able to provide savings are, we can come in and change all those fixtures out to LED and give you uh, savings on those. So there are some savings, about five percent savings. So and the more lights you have, the more you save. Uh, now, if you have your own lights, you know, we can also look at retrofitting those. But again, we won't, now, the difference between roadway lighting and your parking lots, you know, roadway lighting, we will, you know, take everything over for you. But on parking lot, you'll still own the infrastructure, you know, but more than likely, the fixture and the wire is eighty-five percent of your issues when you run into. What happens with that is, if somebody say hits a pole in your parking lot or damaged the underground, and we have already. Uh, retrofitted the heads and the wire, we don't get involved with the repairs or replacing the pole. The customer does that. Once that's done, we come back in and make sure the light and the wire to the, from the handhold to the fixture work properly. And that's the difference between roadway. Roadway, we're on everything. You know, we take care of all the infrastructure damage. You know, so we can do your lights. You you continue, if they're metered or tied to the building, that will continue. That doesn't change however that energy is being captured. The only thing that changes is, you just pay a maintenance agreement for the fixtures. Now, if it's where we already own the fixtures, and you don't own anything, you just pay us monthly, you lease it from us. We can come in and change all those lights out to LED and have you some savings.
Well, how about, oh, our new recs, we're building a new recs in a building over there.
Okay.
How about that? What's our lighting over there? How are we, I I just, sounds like a good time to uh, look into that.
So contracts had new lighting designed into it.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I don't know if exactly how Andrea worked that as far as, she went to Ronnie and got. Uh, Ronnie, I guess would have talked with her about that. I'm not sure. Made a recommendation. We're getting some new lighting over there. Yeah. I think she would have talked to him, but I'm not certain. She normally does.
I can check.
We're building a new rec building over there, and we need to make sure that we have, you know, the correct lighting and everything, since it's all gonna be new. Parking.
Okay. So, so all the light, the poles, all that will be branded?
I don't know about that. I don't know about that outside. I don't know. There's something about the lighting, but I don't remember what it was.
Okay.
But I would sure like to see it, although we're doing the building.
Her number's nine one five nineteen sixty-one.
Okay.
Andrea, would you mind making contact with her and see what she's got worked out on her lighting for the recreation center?
Sure.
Or that Bonnie, whoever, whoever's supposed to do that.
Okay.
Um, and let her know that we, we're thinking LEDs is how we'd like to come back with that.
And we have a lot, lot of lighting over there too. Tennis courts and all this stuff over there too. And.
Now, that lighting, is it decorative? Is it?
I have nobody.
I wonder if that's our own lights or if that's.
If it's our lights, we can just change them out to LED, no problem.
I think they are.
I do too.
I really do. I think they are.
But I, I believe that's something we really need to look into if we want into this other.
I wish I was, I would just give you an answer.
Spending a lot of money over there.
Rec center lights are ours, or have ours.
We're gonna, we'll look at it when we, we'll leave, we'll leave here. I'll take some pictures and see what's out there.
There can't be any overhead wiring.
No overhead wiring.
No overhead wiring.
Oh, uh, everything for beautification was put underground, all the services underground.
Okay. Yeah, we get, we got some work to do. We'll get all that for you. Mayor, wasn't actually about the city parking lot too. The city parking lot too.
Oh, yeah.
It's, it's pretty dim.
Yeah.
Okay, who can look at that as well?
If if we should, if we should, only it's forty-seven that we actually got a proposal for, if we should adopt that soon. Would that, would it mess up working with the other parts?
No, sir. Uh, no, sir. Cities have multiple projects with us.
Okay.
Now, that is probably the the most time to assume as far as on the fixtures, because that's one big shipment.
Yeah.
You know, uh, but we treat each one individual projects.
Okay. We'll probably, uh, we'll probably be talking for about a time if it doesn't split you guys.
How much longer does LED last, last, last?
Well, the manufacturer, far as the warranty, seven to ten years. But you know, with us, the beauty of it. The fixtures that you have had out here currently, your roadway lighting, been out here for decades. You know, warranties expire a long time ago, but when you without Alabama Power, you almost, it's really a lifetime warranty. You don't worry, you don't have to worry about what the warranty looks like with the manufacturer. We cover all of that, even if the manufacturer was to fold. You know, that's just like, oftentimes when you get things done in your house, you either get a side contractor, some, you know, or you go through loads who use a contractor. But you know, that contractor, a year, two year down the road can be vacation Hawaii and just quit the business, and you stuck with maintaining whatever. But you know, those hopefully typically not going anywhere, and they, they're honored that warranty, whatever, that same thing with Alabama Power. But our warranty lasts forever. So even with the fixtures, the manufacturer guaranteed seven to ten years. That's like, if you decide to do, do the lighting yourself, say, I don't wanna use Alabama Power, we'll put in our own poles. But the manufacturer may guarantee seven to ten years, but even after that, leading to that point, you still responsible for the resources, the time dedicated. But without Alabama Power, yeah, you pay a little bit more, but it's a lifetime warranty.
Soon as light goes out, we call, come and place it in the west of charges of the replacements.
Nothing. It's good, the same agreement that you have now with your streetlights, it's the same, the the agreement is honored. It's just that we offer more technology. We're holding the price where we can, and majority of the lights that you have, we're able to hold the price. The price, no upfront cost, all of the capital costs, is because it's it's a large task for us upfront, but we don't pass that along to the customers. What we do is, is put in everything in its business as usual for you.
For a seven dollar increase.
Based on what you currently have out there now.
Thank you, Terrence. The, but Lynda, do y'all have any more questions for us?
We're just gonna leave and go and check out those um, parking lots and see what's out there.
Okay.
To see, I'm gonna take some pictures, see what we can gather.
Okay.
Kinda look at her rec center, she'll go back.
Yeah, but we're gonna do that one first. She, I I have no idea where I am, so she's gonna show me.
Since we're redoing that.
Downtown revitalization.
Yes, I'll show them that.
Uh, yeah.
Take a look at that also, because we'd like to have better lights there.
Okay.
Now, we don't do, now, we don't do uh, we don't do athletic lighting. We don't do that. Um, Georgia Power did it at one point the years, and they got out of that. There's, I guess with the kids playing and if something happened, they looked at it and, and you know, so we don't do athletic. But what we can do is, is the walking trails of the parking lot that lead to those tennis courts.
You'll see all of that over there together.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for allowing us to come in.
Presentation.
Talk to you also.
Well, thank you very much. We're pretty excited here today to hear this good news.
Thank you, man.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, okay. Rodney, I'm gonna put you up next, if you don't mind talking to our council next, please.
Oh, what I've got, I've got uh one of my wastewater plant operators is gonna be retiring next September, Joey Tripple. And uh we have to, A D M requires a trainee to work nineteen hundred hours in the plant as an intern before he can operate the plant by himself. Uh in nineteen hundred hours, take forty hours a week, divide that to forty-seven and a half weeks. That you have to be as a trainee. And during that time as trainee, he can, he can take his test at any time to be a certified operator, wastewater operator. He can take the test anytime during that time, but we highly recommend, we put them through school and classes and everything before they and they have to do a lot of studying before they can take that test and pass. So he's looking at retiring in Sep- September of this next year. So that's gonna put us needing to hire a trainee pretty quick to get him trained the whole time before Joey leaves. So he'll be ready to, right now, I've got three operators at the wastewater plant. And they work, well, that that plant has to run eight hours a day, seven days a week. And they rotate off during, one of them works every Saturday and Sunday. And then he's off the following week, part of the week to to make up for that work in Saturday and Sunday. And they rotate when they work Saturday and Sunday. So.
It it takes four operators to keep it running year round, right?
Well, I mean, we've got three now, that's all we have.
Oh.
Yeah.
So I thought you had three left after he goes.
No, we, no, we've got three now.
Okay.
So we're gonna have to hire an extra, the man that you're gonna replace then, we're we're gonna have to hire him this year so he can go in.
So he can be training.
Do you have somebody in that?
No, I don't, but I'm just asking that that maybe it's the next council meeting, we post a job.
You know, we can have a choice, we could have, that happens.
What's it cost to train it?
That, that's a good question, I mean, the training.
Is it on the job training, supervised, on the job training?
A lot of it's on the job training, uh the classes that I do, I had one this year and will have another one in February. Uh I'm actually holding a class here, but it's for all the, all the operators and all the certified people. And we get people from other surrounding areas that's certified operators that need C E Hs to come into this class.
You hosted one this year, didn't you?
Yes. And I'll be hosting another one in February.
If if somebody applied for that job that had certification, would that eliminate your problem?
Yes, it would, uh you know, they were already certified.
Yeah. But you don't normally get certified operators to apply.
No.
I've talked to the G U N, uh chairman of the board for the G U N Order Authority, and he said they were having a a real hard time finding a certified person.
You, they're, they're, they're getting extinct, I mean, we're fixing to have a shortage of certified operators in the state, water and wastewater.
The young man that was duly trained that was here a couple of years ago, does he, does he have a job?
I don't know what happened to him. He didn't.
Because he would have been a plus, because he was wastewater and water treatment.
He was taking some classes for wastewater and water. He kind of fell off the radar, I don't know what happened to him. He didn't fulfill his time, he was going to spend here before he left, and I don't know where he went.
Well, what are you, what are you saying we need to do? We'll do whatever we need to do, I think.
I'm just saying we need to post, you know, post a job for a trainee at the wastewater treatment plant, as a wastewater plant operator.
Uh we we don't have any choice, we we gotta do it, so whatever you take applications or whatever.
Joey's, Joey's looking at what target date?
September of of next year, he he's, he'll have his ten years of service in and he'll turn sixty-five in April, I think, but.
So by the time we advertise this job and get someone possibly hired, it'll take all that time to train.
A bit, I would have to.
Right.
Okay. With the council's consent, we'll go ahead and post that job Monday night. And if if somebody says we need to wait for some reason, then.
Wouldn't be any reason to wait, would it?
There wouldn't be times, right?
But we have, we do, we have to do the the internal uh s- uh deal thing first to see if anybody's interested from within.
I've been running them at the same time because of the change.
Because of the paper situation. Let's go ahead and post it both ways, put that on our agenda.
We need motion on that?
We we'll have to bring it up uh Monday night.
Oh, that's right.
We can vote today.
That's right.
It's okay, though, we we need to discuss, we need to have the discussion.
Eighty-three years old.
Might just want to give y'all a heads up about it today, so we know, you know.
Well, I got a question, I ain't really saying nothing about this, but is there a, you gotta have a license to put in like these sewer jobs, you've been getting contracts to do? Do you gotta have a certain license to get these contracts or anything? Just like the one behind Sibley's that line. You gotta have, can any contractor do this as well?
Yeah, yeah.
So anybody can bid on this?
Yeah.
Well, I ask the question, who who doing, who's doing this one down here?
Well, we didn't bid this one out, see, it was under the bid law, we didn't have to bid it out.
I know, but who got the contract, like?
Uh Digaway Construction.
Where they're at?
At home.
That's what I'm getting at, you got Jeremy Evans, Heath, and all these others could be doing them, couldn't they not?
Well, they don't have the equipment that they have.
Heath does, I work with him. I know he's got the equipment to do it.
Yeah, he he's got some track old stuff.
I mean, I know, I've been on them, I know what they got. That's where I'm getting at, keep these local boys, cause everybody's shop Hamilton, shop Hamilton, and these very people's got these contracts around here not getting jobs to do this stuff. That's my point.
The reason, the reason that Digaway's doing this job is they they've helped us out many, many, many times at two o'clock in the morning, we called them and they called. We had a ten inch line busted over across the river uh going over to industrial park. My guys worked over there for three days straight, day and night. And I called them and I said, have you got any ten inch pipe in the yard? And they said, no, but I'll find you some. They came over there at eleven o'clock one night with me some ten inch pipe, and he told me, he said, I know your guys are here now. He said, when they get, if they get tired, call us, we'll be back. I called them the next night and they showed up at ten o'clock and worked all night and let our guys go home and get a little sleep after three days being over there. But that's just the type of people they are, I mean, they they've helped us out a lot of times when we're getting about it.
Oh, I understand, but I still say the people in Hamilton need to shut at stuff like that, cause they live here. That's my opinion.
Yep. I under, I I agree with that, too.
I don't mean, what I'm just saying is Heath or Jeremy, whoever's got this kind of equipment, if they here in Hamilton, they need to be getting bids for this. Cause I've been asked this question about this stuff, and I didn't have no answer about it. I didn't know, I didn't, I didn't know if it was a special license.
Have you been one of these men ever installed a commercial set of line?
I know Heath in the house, I know. The manholes and all that they do. I'm just curious.
I think he's been doing a lot of work for us, hey?
Well, I'm just, I'm not saying just him, I'm talking about anybody here.
Last time I could try to get Heath to do something for me personally, uh it's been.
Well, I'm just saying him or anybody local, I was, I was gonna know, you know, I didn't know, I didn't have a clue. When somebody asks you that question, you got an answer for it, I said, I'll find out. That's all I'm gonna do. Cause I didn't know that myself.
But normally, when we do a project like that, yes, we do give contract, a licensed contractor to do them.
Well, I mean, I'm talking about, I didn't know if it had to be a certain license and sewer or hooking them up, you know, I didn't have the right.
Normal projects that we that we do are over the bid limit, and we have to have them bid out. And that's when most of the time, they are bid out, and everybody has an opportunity to put a bid in on that.
We don't know if you ask.
Yeah.
I gotta find this stuff out.
Thank you, Rodney. We've had another police cruiser totaled out last week and as you might know, it's one of our nice Tahoe's that's gotta be replaced, it's it's not our newest, but it's a sixteen model. I think I've had me a bait of Tahos. Five of them have been wrecked since I've been in office. And I don't think they're, I think whether they'll be a top heavy, they're nice to work out of, but I think they're too hard to drive. I'm gonna recommend that we don't replace our cruiser that's gonna be coming up. I want a four door sedan, it's my preference of some sort, four door Chevy. I don't want any more chargers roaring down the highways. So we're gonna have to be deciding about that, so y'all be thinking on it and getting your best concepts and ideas together. Unless I change my mind drastically and or show them where we ought to be buying Tahos, I'm gonna say maybe we go with four door sedan type vehicles for police work.
What happened was in a chase or what happened recently wrecked?
The uh Tahos also got an inherent problem, they have to idle them to keep the computer equipment in the cabs from overheating uh on hot days and General Motors is strictly given a warning about idling their motors long periods of time. It's real bad for the vehicle. So I looked at two new forwards that just come in up at Haylerville last week when I went to meeting up there. I liked them pretty good, y'all be thinking about uh replacement for this uh wrecked vehicle. We're pretty certain it's totaled out, is that correct?
You haven't heard the official word that that's what.
We'll be getting an insurance check for for it, we, all the equipment was salvage, we didn't lose any equipment, we'll be able to disassemble all the equipment and refinish that into another cruiser, but.
What kind do you say it was happened?
It's a Tahoe.
No, what you're looking at.
Pardon?
You're not looking to buy one then?
Uh we'll, we'll need to replace the one that's just been totaled.
Yeah.
But I I just want y'all to think and make some recommendations uh as to what we get by going forward. I I'd like to go back to a sedan type car, four door uh car to work out of instead of Tahoe. It seems that.
What happened recently wrecked? And you just have a.
Nobody knows, young boy, well, they're youngest policeman.
We we may have just had a bad run of luck, it seems like.
Course, might not have been it because of that, you know. That's two or three, isn't it? You know, it's too late.
We've had one stolen from us during an arrest and it was totaled out by a pri- by, it was supposed to be a prisoner. But he got away from us and totaled one of our vehicles, and we've had uh one sideswiped, we had a head on. We had a one that had the wheel knocked off of it by another person's vehicle while they were doing a turnaround. It's just all kinds of bad luck, but I don't know if they're hard to see out of or just what. They are pretty top heavy and we lost this one on a curve. Maybe a tire failure was being claimed as a culprit, but I don't know. At this point, I don't know all the answers, but I'm just thinking maybe we ought to consider four door sedan type. They're not quite as expensive. As I say, the Tahos are very nice for the officer to work out of, but we're having a lot of bad luck with them.
Okay, we buy it here in town and it's like Chevrolet, they don't want to go after it.
Well, we'll probably always buy everything under state bid.
Oh, okay.
Because they're, that's certified to be the cheapest available.
Okay, I I just.
So I think we'll save money to stay on the state bid rule and but I think we can buy a less expensive vehicle and do good work out of it. I'm just a little bit leery of continuing to buy Tahos, cause we're wrecking past the, the long road. I have asked that all of our officers that's been involved in an accident go to driving school to get a certified uh certificate for upgrading their driving skills. They've got a lot on their mind when they're trying to look at their computer information about that tag number ahead and, you know, this kind of stuff. You have to pay close attention when you're out there operating the car and doing other things, I'm not saying that's the cause of any of the wrecks, but it could be distractions. In this case, the other night, it was uh we were making a call and probably urgency in the call and we were probably running pretty fast speed, I think. I know the vehicle went south and the same car was running fast, cause I watched it go down the road. And the other one was coming in from the other side on a more country road and that's where the accident happened. For two years now, I've been talking about cleanup and littering. My solutions don't seem to be working very good, y'all be thinking about strategies for more city cleanup and and littering problems. They continue to be big on my mind and making our city look bad. Y'all could help me come up with some ideas, I'd appreciate it, people are not listening about throwing things out on their street, they continue to do that. Rapid pace, you can drive down the street today, you can see things have been blown off the back of pickups. You can see things have been deliberately thrown out car windows, for anything from bottles to boxes, pieces of plastic, building materials. Everything you can imagine is on our main drag down here, as many times as we pick it up, it comes right back. So our guys don't mind picking up paper, because it's part of their job. But the severity of it, the amount, the amount of times we're having to do it is a problem. Some things will happen and cause some litter, but deliberate littering is a real problem in our city. Retail strategies uh is something we've, uh didn't ever motion and second on that's something we need to decide pretty soon. The contract, I think, ran out in late July, it's almost September and we haven't let them know whether we'll continue on with them or not. They're the folks that are working, trying to recruit retail business for our city, they worked for us a year. They told us how many calls they'd made on our behalf and and how many contacts they'd made, but we haven't really seen the real fruits of our, of their labor yet, but we'll need to decide whether we want to give them another year, five thousand less cost this year than we paid last year, forty-five thousand. Year one, forty thousand, year two and year three, if we stay with them.
I'd say we pay them on commission if they do anything.
That won't work that way.
I just, I just can't see paying a year, nobody pays me a year in advance, nobody pays. Nobody pays you a year in advance, and everybody wants to pay the year in advance. I don't know if anybody does that.
You got anything you wanna offer as a solution to get retail here?
No, but if they're the ones that screwed this Jack's deal, what, what they did. If they wanted to done the compromising on that, they had it messed up. I knew more about what was going on than they did. Did they have any hands that they had? Cause the man at Jack's said that they was dealing with retail streets about the, about the baiting thing. So, if that's the way they do business, I just don't agree with it.
We're gonna try to get it on the ballot to vote. We need to get them in or get them out. Uh, I'd like to do that Monday night if we can, and we're gonna go with the majority on that, uh, so. You know, it's just, we don't need to keep them hanging because they might send us a bill that they'll expect money on if we keep bringing, taking them down the road with us. We had a contract for three years with an opt-out agreement each year, but we haven't opted out or opted to stay in, so we need to do one or the other. If y'all will permit it, I'm gonna put it back on the agenda and, and bring it to at least a vote, uh, next meeting. Whether or not it's a stay-in vote or a get-out vote is up to the council. And I don't know exactly what to say about who must took what on the Jack's deal. The Jack's is building.
I was going about what the man said.
Jack's is building a restaurant, that's all I know. They've got the permits and they've, uh, their license, they paid for their sewer this morning, uh, like they agreed to do, plus some additional, uh, meter sets and that kind of thing. All of it's paid up to date uh, in advance, so I like doing business like that. I don't really have a lot more today. If y'all wanna talk about something, we'll talk about anything that's on your minds. Any subjects you wanna talk about, Tammy? Tammy had to go to the dentist this morning. Let's just all feel sorry for her. She came home with a pretty smile. I told her I hadn't been in that dentist chair in way too long.
It's the only time before I go again. Did you hear about Tamara? What's his name? He reported to you every morning?
Angela, did you have anything else for our council today? Any, any comments or things they need to know about?
Well, I've got some things coming up that, uh, I'm gonna have to work on, but they've changed with our, um, insurance requirements. Where I've got to do, um, kinda like, it's not a background, but it's driving history on all employees that actually drive any type of city vehicle. I've got to start doing a history on all of those, so.
Will that require picture, driver's license, and things like that?
Um, yes, I have to put that information in. I have to send off to the state for the report. And I think each report's like five dollars and something, but that's, that's one thing we kinda got written up for this year cause I hadn't been doing it. But they wanted to change it because they say people's driving history's changed so much. Um, so that's one thing I wanna, I'm gonna have to start doing.
You're, you're dealing with RDS a little bit on a couple of issues right now?
I am, I am. I have to stay on top of them cause they do our, um, they collect like our lodging, our sales tax, uh, process our business license, the alcohol tax.
Occasionally they'll start an audit without, uh, us actually ordering an audit on a customer and then kinda wanna bill us for their time they've worked on it. We don't know really the fruits that we get in return for the audit. Sometimes we feel like it's not that great. So, we have to watch things like that or we'll be paying for stuff we didn't order.
Yeah, they put a lot of audit fees on us if we don't watch it and question them, so.
I, I wanna say about this retail strategy, do you have any? Any, what do you, how do you feel about it? Do we need to get them to come back and talk to us if you think so and tell us what plan they've got on? I own them. We're gonna pay them forty thousand dollars. I'd like to know what they're gonna earn. We keep giving forty thousand here and forty thousand and nothing.
I don't really have any.
We, we, we need help, I guess.
I don't really have it. They can't make us a, a promise to deliver anything. They keep saying that we'll try. Uh, but they've had success at other places. It's, it's the only, they're only six years old. Their company's only six years old. Uh, they're just beginning to build a track record. Uh, what we did as a city is place our confidence in them as a, as an up-and-coming, uh, way to recruit, uh, industry, I mean, retail stores, uh, like I say, they told us, uh, the number of calls and, and, uh, workshops they've gone to, seminars all over the country, introducing Hamilton, Alabama to people, and there's a good number of people that look at places like us that's on their list of, of businesses. How many of them will ever locate here? They'll never guarantee us.
Well, you know what? What gets me is they tell you upfront that, actually just about tell you upfront that they can't, probably won't do anything the first year. If you're gonna pay them forty-five thousand dollars, then they probably won't do anything. Well, that kinda makes me think they looking at that other, was it, if they don't do anything, they're looking for you to be global enough, I guess you'd say, to go into the next one and pay them forty more.
Yeah.
And then if they can get you one or something or two, then maybe the other forty, maybe they'll get you something then, you know, it's, it's, I don't know. It, it's kinda like a game to me.
There were some cities that, that the first contracts already run out and they've renewed the second.
Right.
So, the, their track record, even though it's not that many years, they've already had some contracts run out, the three-year period, and they've renewed. But, um, you know, we're, we're a community of seven thousand approximately. So, to expect all the big stores to file in here is just something we should never expect.
No, we don't.
But to get a few of those stores that would help our shoppers, you know, would be worth something to us. Besides the new opportunities for revenue and this kind of thing. Um, I don't know. We tried these people for a year with an option to stay or, or leave them, and, and I'm just, I just wanna bring it back to the table to either certify that we'll stay with them or get out before we all have hurt feelings here and them send us a bill and say, we've served you fourteen months. We won't pay for this too. So, I think we just need to vote at this point and decide if we're gonna stay or, or leave them. And, and I want everybody to vote their own sentiments. I, I can have an opinion, but I can't vote for you guys. I want, I, everyone, vote your hearts. If you don't think it's good for Hamilton, what we're doing, um, don't continue. If, if you think it is, continue. I mean, that's why I put it in. I wouldn't at all try to have you vote one way or the other.
I, I really, I, you know, like you say, it's, it's a gamble.
Oh, yeah, it is.
It's a gamble, and I, I hate to throw away forty thousand dollars, but I hate to not have somebody working for us, too.
And, and Kenneth Sorry said that he, he don't know if they handled the last deal correctly, and he's gotta think about it, and that's okay. I mean, I don't, I'm not gonna say that, that Kenneth's not partly right there. I think there's been a breakdown in, on communications with him some, and it might, he might point a finger at me on some of that and say, you didn't properly inform us, but sometimes we just don't have the time to sit down and talk about everything we need to talk about. And it's very difficult a lot of times to have conversations that we should have, but, um, maybe a straight telephone call would be a better way to talk to you guys than, than to try to meet together. Cause a lot of times.
Hard to chase you down.
Yeah. I'm in every day.
It's just a gamble, that's right.
If any of you have questions of me, I want you to ask them because obviously I don't mind giving you, uh, the matters that I have to give you, and I, I'll share anything you ask me. And I, I never want us to fail to talk if we need to talk, so.
But how, how is our other new, uh, station down here? Have you heard anything else about it?
Loves.
Loves, yes.
I talked to Scott Hunt last Friday, and he said, Mr. Gleason, it says everything is full steam ahead. Uh, there's no fold-ups of any kind, that no barriers about him coming and developing loves for us. They haven't broke ground yet.
Yeah.
But I think they will soon. I, I told Scott, if anything looks shaky or, uh, anything that I need to know about that, please call me. And I, and when I don't hear from him, I call him or send him a text message, the best way to get it. And every time he always respond, he stopped, Mr. Gleason, everything's fine.
Well, they, they need to know, though, that we need to know as, or y'all need to, we need to know as quick as we can if we're gonna have to give the state or somebody about redoing this road.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. That's real important.
That's gonna be an important thing, get that road, cause it's gonna take some time.
Yeah. You're right, Tim. You're exactly right. I did talk to Keith Jones, and he said, uh, our package for our grant looks real strong. He didn't say it would've been approved, but he said, uh, our application looks real strong. He's been, they called, and he's been talking to some of the powers that be about it.
What about the car company? Are you more familiar?
Who?
Uh, tire company.
Yeah, I called them and told them that Loves has come, and they're missing their opportunity to get down here and sell ugly truckers' tires. And she said that she had told the boss man, he was out that day, and that sounded exciting to the, the office lady, but I haven't heard a word from Wilkes. They haven't expanded to any other territory. I do know that. I asked her if they put in any facilities in, and she said, not yet. She thanked me for calling. I'd still like to have them. I think they're top-notch folks. It's good to see everybody at the table today. Herb, we want you to keep improving. Love Joe, you keep improving. Jean's had a little stamp for them. They's feeling better now.
I don't know about that.
They tell me that a stamp's a miracle thing. I have, I had one. Wish they'd everybody coming. I wish I had more to give you today.